Meeting in order. Officer Martinez, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Sure. Father God in heaven, we come to you today in the mighty name of your son, Jesus, God, and we ask for your perfect will to be done tonight, Lord. We ask for your guidance, Lord, in all the decisions that are made tonight. We ask that you will shed light upon this situation, Lord, upon the council members, upon the city, Lord, upon the city manager. Lord, we ask that you will open doors for the city manager, Lord, to wherever you may leave him, Father God. We pray for Councilor Johnson, Lord, in his current circumstances, Lord, we ask that you will continue to walk with him. Thank you, Father, for everything that you're doing here, in the mighty name of Jesus we pray, amen.
Nita, call order.
Counselor Foster.
Go Blues.
Counselor Locke.
Here.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
Of course, Mr. Claire, Counselor Johnson is not present.
And agenda, no modifications?
No, sir.
Approval of consent agenda for minutes of regular meeting, May sixth, twenty twenty-one, or review and approval of counts payable?
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for minutes of regular meeting, May sixth, twenty twenty-one, and approval of counts payable. Is there any discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, proclamations, communications, and appointments. F one, resignation of Counselor Johnson.
So, good evening, counsel. With unforeseen circumstances, Counselor Johnson has emailed and asked that counsel accept his resignation effective immediately.
I would move to accept the resignation of Counselor Johnson.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Counselor Johnson immediately. Is there any more discussion?
I would just like to let you all know that once you accept his resignation, you then have sixty days to decide to appoint somebody to that chair. If you instruct staff, we can put a letter of interest or put information in the paper. Thank you for letters of interest for that seat if that's what you choose. If you choose to go beyond that sixty days and send it to election, then it would go to the November election.
Thank you, Nita.
You need a?
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resignation of Counselor Johnson.
I would say that we probably want to go ahead and put that in the paper. Okay, swearing in for Officer Martinez.
Good evening, counsel. So, this is Officer Twyla Martinez. She just graduated from the academy on Friday. Mayor Becker had the opportunity to meet her there. I'll get a minute here, I'll let you tell you a little bit about herself. She grew up in Alamosa, did awesome in the academy, and this was the only place that she applied because she wanted to be in Montavista. So, we're extremely excited for her to be here. So, with that, we want to swear her in. I'll raise my hand. I repeat after me, I.
Aye.
Twyla Martinez.
Twyla Martinez.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Under the penalty of perjury.
Under the penalty of perjury.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The state of Colorado.
The state of Colorado.
The city of Montavista charter.
The city of Montavista charter.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And upon which I am about to enter.
And upon which I have been, upon to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome to the meeting.
He already introduced me, but I'm Twyla Martinez. I grew up in Alamosa, I was born and raised there. I have a six-year-old daughter named Chloe over there.
Hi.
I joined the academy because unfortunately I was unable to go to the Marines because I became a mother at a young age. So, I took the next step of coming to law enforcement to pursue the rest of the dreams that I had wanted to accomplish. So, I've accomplished that, and now I am here to serve the city of Montavista. I'm excited to be here.
Don't be too disappointed because everything happens for a reason.
Yeah, oh, I'm not disappointed at all.
I'm glad to have you here.
I'm grateful to be here, so thank you for having me.
That's awesome, excited, looking forward to it. Congratulations.
Thank you, great pleasure. So, nice to meet everybody, and I'll see everybody around here.
Just, you drive snacks, don't give them too many tickets.
All right.
I'll give you your Blues.
All right, citizen comments, special presentation. Scheduled appearances, in order to be included on this portion of the agenda, you have to file the proper appropriate form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Cynthia Baird? Yes, please. And there's a paper up there on there, if you would sign that, please.
Sign or print?
Print, it's fine, thanks.
I mean, does it need a signature?
No.
Just a little blood.
Okay, before I start, I did make up packets of what I'll be telling you that I hope there's enough. Okay, I'll wait till she asks this one. All right, so. If you look, I just printed off an email that I had sent to Mr. Johnson, and that would be the easiest way to kind of explain. I've lived in and around Montavista for like thirty-five years, and we've lived in town currently for like twenty-three years in our house, so I'm pretty familiar with Montavista. I, if you look at the bottom of the email copy I gave you, where it starts, I addressed Mr. Johnson. So, what I'd like to express is my concern and a little bit of frustration, I guess, with the lack of fencing ordinances in this town, particularly when it comes to private property. And so, I say that we live next to a neighbor who erected a privacy fence between our front yards, okay? And it's not a common fence in this town. If you drive around, you won't see a fence like this quite. But the problem with that fence is it really blocks visibility for anybody exiting our driveway or coming down the sidewalk, you can't see that there's a driveway. So, it's height and visibility. I understand the height of that fence is within, but the only requirement that the city has for fencing, which is six feet. But the visibility doesn't seem to be addressed by any existing ordinance. We have talked to the neighbor, but suggested some things he could do to help, but he hasn't, he's chosen not to do that. So, my concern is that that lack of visibility is a danger. We have many children on that block, and in the summertime, anytime, children are riding their bikes and their scooters on the sidewalk. They're playing with the balls in the street, and kids play back and forth across each other's houses and yards. So, we have, right, a number of children. And the incident that prompted me to contact all of the council members, which I think each and everybody responded. A few weeks ago, I came outside and found a half-naked little toddler in my driveway, standing behind one of my cars. And of course, I took her in and everything and put some poll-ups on her for my granddaughter and called police officers, and they arrived quickly. And one of the first things the officer said was, good thing you weren't backing up. And that hit me, that this visibility issue is not my imagination. I don't believe it's my imagination. So, eventually, the mother came running down the street. The child had followed the family dog out, he was running, so baby was running, okay? And while she stopped in my driveway, I guess she got tired, but everything was all good. The girl just escaped through the front door with the dog, so the mother's a perfectly good mother. But the concern is that that child was so short. I mean, two feet, okay? So, when you look at some of the pictures, I want you to consider that or ask you to consider that. And so, you can see that the fence is right up to the sidewalk, right on the property line, which unfortunately is only a few feet from our driveway, okay? I know, other cities do have ordinances. In fact, I called Delmore today and actually spoke with the code enforcement officer. They have a fifteen-feet setback from curb and gutter. They have a five-foot setback from streets, and the fencing must provide fifty percent visibility. So, a comparable town in the same county thinks more than height requirements and materials. They don't have a permit, it's not a, so you don't pay something to put up your fence, but they file an affidavit and explain to the city what they're doing, okay? But that little naked toddler, you know, had I been jacking out of my driveway in a public sidewalk, she could have been hurt. And my strong, after talking to Delmore, and even I spoke with Mr. Newark, Newark, a while back, and he said that it's one of the first cities he's worked in that didn't have more ordinances, okay? That also encouraged me to see if maybe this is a problem. But my point is, at the end of my email, I end with, a fence should not place the public at risk, particularly children. And it should certainly not put another property owner in a position of liability. So, I'm gonna go through the pictures, I put them in a certain order on purpose. Don't laugh at how big they are, it's the first time I printed from my phone, and I didn't know how to resize the picture first, so, yeah, I use a lot of ink today. So, the first picture just shows you the general situation, okay? The second picture shows I was backing out of the driveway to show that at this point, where the end of the car is, I still cannot see around that fence, the post particularly. I cannot see who's on the sidewalk. If the neighbor has a dumpster there that blocks it even more, and I know that he's allowed to do that, but I'm saying you add in all the, all the factors of visibility. The third picture is the soonest I can see somebody coming from that direction, and that's in the backseat rear window. And I took it as if I were going down the sidewalk. If I were a child and I was pushing that bicycle or that scooter running, I just think the chance for a collision is really pretty strong if you look at that picture. And it's only because of where the, of, it's not just where the fence is, it's the height and visibility. I'm not certain that six feet in certain places is a good idea. And many fences around town, they begin shortening them, they're leveled off as they approach the end of a street, a driveway, an alley. So, I don't know if this constitutes any safety violation that would result in asking the owner to repair or correct the impediment of visibility, but I would like to ask that counsel recommend action on this issue and proceed with an ordinance to clarify this issue. If I've heard from now more than one person that the lack of some reasonable restrictions is common, I mean uncommon, sorry, uncommon, then I think that's worth thinking about. I am pretty sure that the city asks homeowners, property owners who have bushes, trees, corners, particularly stop sign, and the reason they have to keep them trimmed is because of why?
Because of the view.
Visibility, okay? So, if we do it for other things, why are we not? And I don't, like I said, there's not very many of these types of fences in town. You can drag around and say, well, we've had lots of people spell nets. And so, if we're already taking measures, you know, where a tall vehicle can be parked, how far away from the corner on the curb can it be parked, then I'm confused why we don't also think about situations like this, where the city ordinances we have just aren't real. There's not much depth to them. There should be a recourse to if, if all the person has to do is just put up the fence, there should be recourse or something to say, hey, wait, that's, how come they able to see around that? And so, that's what I'm here to present, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your email.
What does that, couldn't say? I was looking for it, couldn't find it.
Oh, it doesn't.
It doesn't?
So, the only thing, Mr. Mayor, that we regulate well as far as fence heights goes is corners. So, we have a vision site triangle for the corners and for fences and shrubs and everything, and it's all like really good. It's very common, but when you get to interior lots, there's no height restriction, there's no, there's no fence setback requirement other than it has to be inside the property line, which is presumed generally to be inside the sidewalk, interior is a sidewalk, or, you know, within what, if there was a sidewalk. But anyway, it's very strange indeed that we don't regulate the height of those front yard fences. Because if you're on a corner, yeah, we absolutely do, you know, and everything she's saying totally makes sense. But our code says it's permitted, so you can't deny a permit for something that, I mean, so obviously, the solution would be if the council, like, head dotted, then we would work on bringing some code amendments to the council that we could regulate that in the future.
If we did that, it would, it really wouldn't help this situation.
Well, that's why.
Because it would just grandfather in all the fences that are already in, right?
Well, unfortunately, that is true. You can't pass a new law and make it retrograde.
Can't make it.
Right.
But there is no safety violation that the current situation would address? I mean, like you said, if this were a corner.
Right, but since we, we don't have any code that addresses it, so is it unsafe?
So, you're saying without a code, you can't issue a violation?
Correct, right.
But could you issue request? Like, you know, we're, I mean, I'm not wanting anybody to get a ticket or anything, I just, I don't want to have little kids.
Well, I think if the code, if the code was changed, we could say, hey, we just did this code change, and this really is an issue, is this something you're willing to consider? You know, that would give us some legs to stand on.
So, if we wrote a code, we could go to this particular fence and set owner and.
Well, and we could request that they make some kind of modification.
But there's, but there would be no way to enforce anything, there would be no way, if they just said, nope, I'm gonna leave it?
They have received a private property entitlement.
Then I have. They have what?
They have received an entitlement for that fence, essentially, so you can't really take it away.
Okay, but they don't receive an entitlement to impede visibility of public or anybody else. That is, that's a very broad entitlement. It really is. And without a code, how liable would the city be? Since I brought it up and asked, and now it can't be done, and that fence will stay in existence.
I mean, if they got the permit properly and put the fence up, I.
There's no permit required to put a fence up.
There is, absolutely.
Well, there wasn't a permit on it.
There is, absolutely, a permit issued for this fence. It's actually the council's packets.
And no one looked at the visibility at that time?
The code doesn't have any, has no bearing on visibility, I'm sorry, it doesn't. It says you can go up to your property line, and the fence can be, actually, there isn't a height restriction.
The one option that you may have is to have anywhere from an eighteen to a twenty-four inch round mirror put up on the corner of the fence or the property, then you'd be able to see each way, each way.
So that the driver coming out could see.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's the way we used to do it with the town of Snowmass Village on driveways that were on corners, hidden driveways, on steep roadways. And so, we would have mirrors that property owners or whoever would put up a mirror for safety so that you have visibility both ways.
And we keep a cone right there, and you saw the picture, just to let people know there's a driveway there. And that's the best we can do so far, so the mirror is a very good suggestion.
And, you know, and quite honestly, possibly, that's something that, you know, this property owner, the neighbor, might be willing to help invest in, or, or somebody may, whether it be that or it may be through some kind of community funding possibly that may have a draft for that, for safety, more than anything.
Would that require any city permits to put this mirror on?
Put a post for the mirror, no?
Okay, I'm just making sure that we'll be living.
I mean, you know, honestly, that kind of falls into like a long ornament, in reality.
Okay.
Right, I mean, you can put all the posts in your front yard.
We'll see if we can look at that, I'll, my husband will look at that.
I would think that we do need to address this so this doesn't pop up in the future.
Right.
And so, yeah, I think it would be good if we could, you know, have something drafted that addresses the situation so we don't have to go through this again, so we don't have to sit something to go through again.
Is this something that we would do, or is this a planning and zoning issue?
I think something like this is pretty simple, between the clerk and I, we, there is a hundred thousand fence codes out there. We can, we can wrangle you up something pretty quick, probably by the next meeting, that you can review the draft and if you want any changes or not, we'll do an ordinance and get it done, because it's not, it's not rocket science. It's just weird that we don't have it, but we have, I would bet. We have a joke that there's six hundred things that need to be fixed in the municipal code right now. This is six of one, but it's relatively, relatively simple. But picking which ones, this is a good one to pick, because it is simple, and I don't think it requires a planning commission to, you know, worry about if this adds or ends or whatever.
Well, the other thing that you may want to consider as well, they're gonna, if they put, if they get the code put in, and let's say next spring, wind picks up, sixty mile an hour gust blows the fence down. Then all of a sudden, the code's in place, so that fence can no longer be erected like it was because there's a code.
Not likely to happen, it's pretty sturdy, but in time, the boards are already.
We're not. You have a pretty heavy vehicle too.
You know, sometimes cars slide in the winter, snowplows have a tendency to track with the ice, and.
We've had people slide in our yards, so, yeah, things do happen, but the mirror idea sounds pretty good. But, yeah, it's just unfortunate, and, you know, we questioned it from the very beginning. We called the code enforcement officer out there from the very beginning when we realized how that fence was gonna be, and he couldn't do anything.
Right, because.
Except, but it's like logic is logic, it's like, we need a law to tell us every time that something is unsafe. It's just logical, I mean, to wait on a law seems, I mean, it's nice to have the ordinance, but it seems illogical to put little children at a continued risk and because you can't rob grandfather again, so that's.
Does, does this neighbor have kids?
No, to me, there's still a safety violation that, I mean, if a, if a vehicle was parked in a way that you couldn't get around it, the owner would be, would have a citation, so to me, it's still a safety violation because of the visibility, but.
Unfortunately, common sense with some of our neighbors and just throughout, it's not very common anymore. But if it were a vehicle, it's parked on the city street, whereas this is on the private property.
Sir, can I get your name?
Oh, I'm nobody.
On my property too.
G O D Y.
Okay.
Jeremiah.
So, we'll work on something else.
So, do you think you might have something to discuss at the next council meeting?
Oh, yeah.
So I could attend and hear what you want.
Yeah, we should have a draft for the next council meeting.
Well, it's progress. I don't win everything, but the mirror idea might work.
Well, but you brought attention to something in that matter.
I feel like I helped other people who might end up in the same, and a lot of people don't bother to do things the same, okay? They do it this way, and so, I, in that way, I hope I have helped.
You brought attention to it, and somehow we can do something about it, and I wish, you know, I mean, like you, I wish we could go back in time and, and do that. Unfortunately, no, no matter how many laws, codes, statutes, and ordinances we write, as Mr. Jeremiah said, there's no, we can't legislate, compensate, in good manners. And, you know, and I think that's, I think the entire country has tried to do that for a long time, and it just doesn't always work out well.
We appreciate you coming.
Well, thank you, I appreciate you giving me the time. I put a lot of work into this, you could see the pictures.
Well, and as, as when I.
I did put a lot of work into, like, emailing all of you, I called Delmore, like, I'm not complaining. I printed the pictures out so stupidly because I didn't know who's doing what, and so, yeah. So, that's why I really appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming. We're four people, we need people to come and tell us what the problems are, we don't always know them.
You have an open council seat.
We have one?
An open council seat.
We do, we do.
And the women are outnumbered.
I'm teasing, teasing. It's okay, no, you're fine.
Forgot my wig.
They're good to me, so.
All right. So, we'll go on to citizen comments. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments, please limit your comments to three minutes, council will not take action at this meeting.
Hello, she's a gorgeous.
Yeah, she's.
Marco, 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 Marco.
Guys.
Come on, you're ready.
We want to know how you're doing if nothing else.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, hello, everybody, I am still on restrictions, but I am doing better, and I actually did some yard work today, and I was so excited. I just want to say how beautiful our city looks with all the trees. What a joy it is to drive down Morris, and there are all those pretty trees, too bad they have to have apples on them, but. But it is beautiful, and we're slowly working on the beds in the park. The vine weed is winning out, but, you know, it's just a joy to be alive, and I just want to say thank you for your jobs and what you're doing, and keep up the good work, and right now, I can't see anything wrong. How about that?
Thank you, Margot.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margot.
Thank you, Margaret.
You told me you were gonna come this time, or something.
No, maybe next one.
Okay.
Maybe.
Anybody else?
Well, if you want to hear more from me, I guess.
Well, it's totally up to you, sir, you have three minutes to have some.
We'll make it short and sweet.
Be sure and sign that paper up there on that podium, please.
Oh, okay.
And I know it's not nobody, so it's on there.
Well, you're right, well, know who you are.
No, I just thank you for your time. I, sorry to hear of the resignees. No, I just thank you for your time. I, uh, sorry to hear of the resumes, resignation, Council Johnson. Um, but, uh, whenever it comes time for applications, come out for that, uh, I would be very happy. If you guys would take it. Um, I've got a good sum of years working Public Works and the Road Division for the town of Snowmass Village and the city of Lemon Springs. Um, while I was homeowners there, and now that I'm homeowner here, I've also thought about going on with the city of Mon Vista and assisting, if nothing else, consulting with their Public Works Road Crew and helping update, tighten up, and find some ways that would be more cost effective rather than cost prohibitive when it comes to road and street projects that we have in the community. I've got a pretty fair amount of experience with it. I've got a lot of connections with reps. I've got a lot of connections with superintendents through Aspen, Picken County, Snowmass Village, city of Lemon Springs. Um, where they lease or they purchase vehicles and then they go to sell them. And these, these trucks, dump trucks, single axle, Tannomax, or whatever they may be, uh, are also plow trucks. They also use them for asphalt patches and plowing. Uh, they've got wing blades for the trucks. And they turn these trucks over with less than twenty thousand miles. Yes, they make up for it with the amount of hours they have, but they are pennies on the dollar for what they sell them for compared to what they paid for them and what they've got invested into them. And so, like I say, I would love to, uh, if nothing else, um, love to at least, I guess, uh, I don't know, consult, you know, Public Works. Uh, I used to run their exact same sweepers that they have. They have an Elgin, uh, Geovac, they have an Elgin Megavac, or Megawind, sorry. Um, both of which are nice machines. The Geovac's a much better machine. It's a lot quieter than the Megawind. But the problem is they're both cost prohibitive. If you've got both of them out on the street cleaning different parts of town, sweeping, you're not running two motors. You're running four. They have an auxiliary motor plus they have the chassis motor. Auxiliary motor's running at twenty-five hundred RPMs. That's a lot of diesel that it's going through. We got ideas about other sweepers that are out there. And honestly, between the outright sell or trade of these two sweepers, you wouldn't be looking at a significant amount for buying a new sweeper um, that is, that only runs one motor. It's a hydrostatic sweeper. It's done by Delavo, which is an Italian company, but they have a warehouse in Denver. Denver runs twenty-five of these sweepers. It is a four-wheel steer sweeper. It also has a front room, a front, sorry, a front room. It gets all the dog ears that a traditional sweeper cannot get on the curb and gutter line. It also has a hundred and seven point eight inch width that it can sweep at once simultaneously. This sweeper has the absolute least amount of dust of any sweeper on the market. Um, like I say, I used to run street sweepers, uh, forty hours a week, five days, uh, pretty much from the time spring rolled around, soon as it started hitting twenty-eight degrees, I could run the sweepers from then all the way through into the fall. Um, the thing is about the Delavo, which is very nice, you can run this year round. You can run three hundred and sixty-five days a year because you don't have to worry about it freezing. It's not necessary for it to have water in order to sweep. It is a mechanical sweeper with a vac assist. And so I spoke with the reps about this years back when they were. Oh, no, it sounds like my wife calling.
That is the timer.
All right, I'll shut up and let you guys.
Sorry.
Here's my signature.
Sorry about that.
I'm tornado.
I am a, I'm a bit long-winded. Yeah, it sounds like my wife's ringtone, though.
Catch the pair for that next time.
There's more of them.
There's more of them.
My Indians weren't so bad.
Well, I don't know about those Indians, Martha.
I, I didn't see people jumping and went off.
I think it's my wife calling. But, uh, no, thank you for your time. And like I say, I would love to touch base with the guys in the future, whether it's on consultation with the Public Works Division, um, as well as additional training for our crew, which works in our advantage in so many ways. Legalities are a huge thing. I did point out to some of the guys, uh, this last week that since they're working on Main Street, also known as two eighty-five, one sixty, it's a state highway. State highways during the day, you have to have a twenty-eight inch cone. At night, it has to be thirty-six inches. But during the day, you do have to have a twenty-eight inch cone. There's an M U T C D code. And no doubt, our city attorney is very familiar with that, as are most attorneys. Um, because there are people out there that know a lot more about this than public work superintendents. And so it's definitely, uh, something to look into to maybe broaden the training to expand the training for public works crews. There are LTEP courses that go throughout the state. Now that COVID is kind of somewhat simmering down a little bit with vaccinations, um, they're starting to hold these again.
Mr. Vance is the one in charge of that part of it, so.
Okay.
That's who you need to be busy with.
Oh, great. I get to do it. I think it's gonna whoop me. Hey, thank you for your time, Mike.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Looks like we're going to award contract for Bronx Street improvements. That's a bellman. Rob?
Good evening, Council. Tonight, we have in front of us the award of our two thousand twenty-one street project, which is Bronx Street. Um, you have in your packet our, um, contractor agreement. Um, we are looking at, um, starting this project June fourteenth. And the contract, we, we do something a little different because we only have one vendor in the valley that supplies asphalt, and that's ACI Constructors. So asphalt contractors out of Alamosa is the only group that actually does asphalt for the valley. So, um, we sole source with them and we go, we bring them on when we start our planning process. And we save money that way. This year, um, we were able to continue another street for the exact same price that we paid last year, even though all the materials have gone with. They decided they, now that they've kind of familiar with our streets and what to expect, they decided to go ahead and keep their same price from last year. So we have a grand total for Bronx Street of one hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents. So with that, um, if Council would, I'd need a motion to approve the contract and authorize, um, the mayor to sign that contract so we can get started on. And I will refer to questions you might have.
Motion to approve the contract and have the mayor sign it.
Seconded. Been moved, been seconded to approve the contract and have the mayor sign it. Is there any more discussion?
So friendly amendment to your Counselor Foster's motion, we include the actual amount of the contract?
Yes.
And the name of the contract?
It's Asphalt Constructors Incorporated.
Internet hadn't just kicked me off. I can't see this anymore. I wish to amend the motion, what should I, to include, uh, let's see. We need the name, name of the amount, is that correct?
Yes, with the contractor and the amount.
Okay. Where did my name in the contract? This is wrong, no, it's not.
First time. Paragraph.
Oh. Ah, there we go, asphalt contractors. Okay. I wish to amend the motion to include asphalt contractors as the contractor in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, three hundred, three, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-five, not seventy-four cents.
Seconded. It's been moved, seconded, and amended. Is there any more discussion? Nina?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protemstegola?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the contract to Asphalt Constructors Inc. in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents for the Bronx Street contract.
Thank you, Council.
Good. Thank you, Rob.
Uh, evening, Mayor, Councilors. I often ponder the question, in a bid that large, how come it's seventy-five cents or sixty-three cents or thirty-two cents? Why don't we just round that bad boy off? But anyway, I have no explanation, but that means any real explanation. Speaking of not meeting expectations, I have a different, uh, report for you this evening. A reminder, we have a work session next Tuesday evening, six P M. Sam Life from SERSA will be down here to make a presentation, talk to you guys. That was something set up like, SERSA offered to do training, local training, I don't know who the member, which was older than, yeah, come on down. So he'll be here next Tuesday evening. Um, we did close on the sale of two twenty-nine Adams today, which you all authorized, I don't know, like, thousand years ago, or three months, or whatever it was. Um, so that building is now closed. That was the Valley Publishing Building, so. It'll now be on the tax rolls, it'll be twenty-five thousand dollars and change. So that was good. Uh, the main thing I want to talk about, uh, tonight is the fabulous American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. So you might recall, I stood before you guys a little while back and said, wow, so the President said to pass this bill, we're gonna get this money directly, directly from the federal treasury. That's what he said. And that is not the case. So unless you're an entitlement community, but it means you have fifty thousand or more people, uh, you will not get the money directly from the federal government, the US Treasury. It will, at some point, when they figure out how it's actually gonna work, and you recall, they were supposed to have the first tranche of money in sixty days? Well, it took sixty days for Treasury to write the first level of rules, the, what do they call it? The interim final rule, whatever that means. Um, but they haven't written a rule on how the money will get to smaller communities that are less than fifty thousand people. Except that, at this point, all the guidance says it'll go through the state. There's no rules yet, saying the state can't take administrative fees or impose additional regulations. Except that guidance suggests that they shouldn't do that. So all I'm trying to tell you is that great promised amount of money that we think might be nine hundred eighty thousand dollars to half each year may not be that much. And when we actually get it is somewhat unknown. Uh, they might have, they might have the rules written for how they're gonna do this, um, by the end of July. So, uh, I guess it goes a little attitude, don't count the chickens until the eggs hatch. So we will know at some point how much money we're gonna get. Um, what they didn't talk about was the huge amount earmarking that was done in that bill when it passed Congress. So, you know, we're gonna spend this many billions on transportation, uh, this many billions on this, and this much on COVID shots, which, oh, which is fine, not criticizing that, but I think the original calculations of how much communities would get were a little overstated because they didn't know what all the earmarking was. There were sixty-five point one billion dollars, I think I have it in here. Uh, sixty-five point one billion that'll be provided to cities and towns. That sounds great. But only nineteen point six billion will go to non-entitlement units, which is all the towns under fifty thousand in the United States, so nineteen point six billion sounds like a lot of money, but you divide it by all the small towns in the United States that are incorporated and special districts. And I think the counties fall in there too. So, uh, it may be a little bit less than what they told us. Um, also, the rules, and I included the sheet on the rules because it's fabulously vague. Um, hopefully, they will have actual rules by the time we get the money. The only thing we know for sure that they actually say clearly, commit necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. They talk about paying to respond to workers performing essential work during COVID-nineteen public health emergency, which is pretty much over, as far as I can tell. So I'm not sure how you could use that item B. Maybe item A, if it's fleshed out, could be useful for our community, and C. You can't use, uh, the C part to replace any sales tax revenues, and R C B does it too, so. Um, it's a very interesting thing, and hopefully, we'll know more in July or August or somewhere down the road. Um, they did extend the amount of time we get to spend the money that we don't know when we're gonna get and how much it's gonna be. So twenty twenty-four, so that's the good news. Have I seemed all sarcastic about it? I, so, that's all I had this evening. Appreciate your time. Unless you have any questions?
So does the, the county have this money now? And there's, nobody has this money?
Um, no.
Or, no one that we know, none of our friends.
None of our friends.
None of our friends have this money.
But our money will not flow through the county. It will flow through the state. But I don't believe the county, I don't think anybody has this money actually in hand yet. Because entitlement communities don't, because they just came out with the interim final rule, right, um, like a week ago. So I don't think they distributed any of it to cities, counties, and towns. Um, some of the other money, like COVID vaccinations, they probably have, but anyway, it's a beautiful thing to spend four trillion dollars and not know where it's going. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. City Clerk?
So for that, I've already stole some of it, but reminder that you have a work session on May twenty-fifth at six P M with SERSA. Topic will be the seven key commitments for success in a public office. Um, as you see on the amended agenda, we did take off the lease contract with the chamber. Um, and I had sent you all an email in regards to having a work session. Um, I'd like to pin down that work session so that we can go ahead and, um, invite the chamber to that work session so that that contract can be worked out and brought back to Council. I have the dates of June eighth or June twenty-second for that work session. Either date works best for all of you.
I have no available meeting time.
Um, either one.
I should be good for either one.
So twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
It's a gamble. Just roll the dice.
And then I just have a, a quick little thing I wanted to let you all know. So, um, the USDA food box program teamed up with the city of Monavista on Tuesday to bring families of Monavista food. They delivered two thousand five hundred ninety-two boxes of food, one thousand three hundred sixty gallons of milk. Dave and Asus with the Public Works Department helped unload the two semis full of food with the help of Patrick and a couple of his employees from the Rio Grande Road and Bridge Crew. We had Kelly Widger, ten Monavista High School students, Barb Sears, and members of the Nazarene Church, Kim from the Rec Department, and the Clerk's Office. Kim from the rec department, and the clerk's office to help load boxes into families' cars. We worked from seven-thirty A M to four P M handing out food. We gave the boxes, we gave three boxes of food and two gallons of milk to each family. We estimated that we served over one thousand eighty-one families in the Manavista area. A very special thanks again to Dave and Jesus and the Public Works Director, Rob Vance, for allowing them to be there all day with us when I specifically said, oh, I only need them for fifteen, twenty minutes. They were there all day. So thank you, Rob, and thank you for Dave and Jesus. Big thanks to Patrick and the crews from the Rio Grande County Road and Bridge Department. Kelly Widger from contacting the food bank and bringing the trucks to us and allowing for the city of Manavista to take charge in that program. The Nazarene Church purchased twenty-five boxes of pizza to serve all the volunteers for lunch that day and to the Manavista high school students and all the volunteers. We worked hard, we laughed, and hopefully we helped families in Manavista. As Mayor Becker would say, we are money strong.
Woo-hoo.
That's awesome. That is awesome. Did you get rid of all that other pallets that are still there?
We did, we actually, the Sunflower Bakery took the rest of the milk and was able to use that.
Good. Public Works report.
I don't want to follow that. Keeping in the same line as community involvement, Public Works this past month has held our citywide cleanup days. It's an annual event that we do each year for the residents of Manavista where we have free dump days there in our shop for people to come in and bring whatever they, as long as it's acceptable to the landfill, they can bring it to us and we go ahead and dump it. This year, we did two hundred and seventy cubic yards of debris from city yards. That doesn't include probably another hundred and twenty yards of lint. So overall, it was almost three hundred and fifty cubic yards of material that we took off of people's properties, so. We're considering a day and a half, so. Other than that, I don't really have a written report. We are in full summer mode, we got several projects going on. All the parks have water at this time, we will be coming first of June. We'll be starting with the garden club, planting the flower gardens throughout town and bringing the flowers down to downtown and in front of city hall here. Other than that, I am going to be out of the office for a while, so. Lowell and Ababeta and Dave, my supervisors, will be kind of taking over and making sure things go. So if you need something, please get ahold of one of them, and they'll be able to move things forward. Okay? And with that, any questions?
Appreciate what you guys do.
I appreciate it, thanks.
PD, the chief.
Uh, mine's pretty short, too. So heavy into stampede planning. We have our meeting, I think, next Tuesday? Tuesday night with the, with the security committee. We've already submitted the parade, the parade permits and stuff, and the parade is only going to, I don't know if they, you guys know this, but it's only going to be one day this year. It's going to be just one day on Saturday, so that'll actually, Rob and I met with the parade organizer yesterday. And so it's only one day, which is, which is good, that's going to take a lot of pressure off of some stuff and, but we've already submitted the, the permits and everything for that and C dot has no problem with it, so we just wait for the permits to give back. Then Tuesday, we're having a, a meeting with the security committee to go over all the other stuff. So we're in full force and ready for, ready for stampede to happen. We did hold, thanks to the city, we held the police academy graduation out here. It was, it was a great venue. I think Rebecca and the mayor can attest to that, it was, I think, going forward, since I'm the director of the academy, we're going to do it here, it was, it was the best place, the president of Trinidad State was, she was there and she even commented that what a great place and a great venue this was to do it here in Manavista. So I think going forward, until I'm no longer the director and somebody else wants to do it, but we're going to do it in Manavista and kind of showcase Manavista and show off Manavista a little bit, so it was, it was a great turnout. We had several hundred, I would guess a couple hundred people for graduation, and we had seventeen graduates from the academy, so. It, it was, it was a good time. We've been using, I don't know if you guys are all signed up for the reverse nine-one-one? If you're not, I put that on your sheet here for the, to sign up. So if we have a, if we need emergency alerts to go out, and I'm trying to get this out, get more people in the communities to sign up for the reverse nine-one-one. And there's a website you go to, it's very, very simple, you can sign up several cell phones for several different locations and it's W W W dot S L V E nine-one-one dot org, and again, that's on your sheet. So for example, like, I have my work phone and then my, my personal phone, so I've got one set up for the Manavista community and then one in the area that I live at, so that way, if there's something going on in that area and they send a reverse nine-one-one, whether it be an emergency notification for, you know, police activity or a fire or pretty much, I mean, they use it for pretty much anything, and it's ran through the state patrol dispatch center. But it will alert your phone, but you have to sign up for that, so we're really trying to encourage people to use that. And we've used it a couple times in the last couple of weeks for a couple of incidences that we had. And I'll tell you, one, it, it worked great because we did the reverse nine-one-one. That information went out and there was a citizen that called in and reported, that was that armed robbery incident we had with the juveniles, the staged armed robbery. And they gave us the description of, said, I saw that person running down the alley and that led us to some of the evidence and then the dog tracking back around. So we're trying to really encourage people to, to sign up and to use that app, and it's, it's very simple, it takes two minutes to sign up on the phone, so. Other than that, I think that's about all I've got, unless you guys have questions.
I can attest to the fact that the reverse nine-one-one alerts that comes through, I'm signed up for the, for my phone number and for text.
Yeah, it's, it's a great, the system that they use, it, so state patrol does it for, their dispatch center does it for the whole six counties. So once you sign up, and again, if you've got a couple of different phone numbers, you can sign it up for wherever you, your, your media, and then, so like, if they need to use it, then they, they're like, you know, the officers will tell them, hey, I want it to be like a four-block area or a mile radius of wherever that, that incident is going on, so that's, they can just kind of like, you know, draw, literally draw a circle on a map and say, okay, this is the area that we're going to send a reverse nine-one-one out to. Doesn't necessarily go out to the entire community, but if we wanted it to, it could be that, that quick. You know, some of the firefighters have worked over the years, they've just done a mass blast and drew it around the whole county and sent it out and sent here the notification, so. I, I would sign up for it, it really, it really keeps you informed about what's going on. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I T.
The best we have.
It's going to be fairly short as well tonight, so we haven't been as active over the past month, I would say. Been waiting more on parts and items like that for this big project than we did just get an interim, so that will help immaculately. Tomorrow, we'll be here completely rebuilding the entire network side of I T. We've been trying to figure out some slowdowns within the network, specifically with applications like Casell, which we have a server in the back for. So far, we're just limited down to what we have currently in the closet, so we're going to try to replace it all and see, see what that does. I mean, it needs to be replaced anyways, but we're running back there, it's fairly dated by this point, so. It's just multiple things finally pushed us into going through this upgrade. We will also be trying to rewire some of the P D, they are a distance aways from, from us, a little over three hundred feet. And once you're underneath a net cable past three hundred, you start to see some major problems. Other than that, we had a NAS die and that's responsible for all of our backups, like, all of our long-term backups, so we have a temporary solution going up and we'll be building a new server for that. If you have any questions, I think that's it for today.
Don't ever tell us that you're not busy.
So these reports are actually, they don't really show the whole story and part of why I disagree with them is just, we constantly have things to do. There's going to be a phone call here, I'll be helping someone out there, those don't generally get shown. We're pushing to put more of that in tickets, but it doesn't change the fact that a lot of little things happen in the backend that we just, you guys don't see, so trying to come up with a report and give that to you guys, it's difficult, to say the least.
We appreciate what you guys do.
Well, thank you very much.
So tomorrow, when you're doing all the, all these updates, all on the other computers, it works or doesn't? That's all I know, but, so tomorrow, we won't have emails or still be going or?
Everything that's internet-based, anything Chrome-based, that's going to continue to work. It's just here in the city, everything's going to drop dead while we're working on it and it's definitely a very large project that we don't do very often. So, I mean, if it, if we don't complete it tomorrow, we'll be here Saturday, and if it's not done by that day, we'll be here Sunday. Got to have a backup Monday.
Thank you.
All right, yes, I'm ready.
Council committees, city commissions and council reporters.
Weather's starting to get nicer, wind's not blowing as much, so makes everybody in a better mood. Congratulations to the city and the chief for the new officer, I think that's great. I did have, maybe this for Rob, I did have a, a citizen approach me about a city speed limit sign. They just moved into, right on the highway in Morris, it's like that second house over from the corner, right where it says forty miles an hour, and he says, man, cars just, they see that forty mile an hour sign from like two blocks away and they're already forty-five or even sometimes a little faster right there. They, they were just hoping that maybe we can move the sign down to maybe a block down, I'm not sure how much that would take or?
I can put a request in, but that, if you're talking on one sixty here, that's actually C dot.
Right.
And they're very particular as far as what they allow. They go off of the M U T C D and the eighty-fifth percentile rule. So their speed limits are really a caution council as far as trying to really pursue changing the speed limit because they do a traffic study and what can happen and has happened, they use the eighty-fifth percentile as that's what they use to set the speed limit. So you can have a forty or forty-five mile an hour speed limit, they do a traffic study, if the eighty-fifth percentile is higher than that, then they have to move that speed limit up. So they can't arbitrarily lower a speed limit. But to move it so it's a little further out of the town area, they might be able to do that. I don't know if you've seen that, chief, on that.
Which, what's that?
It's a sign, it's this one that's right over here, that's where, it says forty, right? If you go this way, thirty's here, but the forty is right over here by the corner.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Right, just past our property, and people like put the hammer down pretty good.
So they had that headed out.
Right.
And coming into town, they're still doing forty-five, fifty? Or one hundred miles?
They break, well, yeah, they break pretty good at their.
I've tried running out of traffic and been worse.
They don't count, lock lives right there, so like, oh, it's great.
I'll just go sit in South.
Email and see if we can get there.
I think I've known.
Move it a little bit further.
Yeah, a little farther west.
Further to the west.
Which would make better sense. Because you've got an alley there, you have a street, an alley, and then the driveway into city hall. It would be nice if that was.
And then to the intersection right there at the park.
And for some reason, it takes people a little while to slow down, but it doesn't take them long to speed up.
Joe, you don't want to use your brakes too much, it's hard on your brake light.
Is that, is that what it is?
You know, but it's probably fine if you have to press on that right foot pedal, because.
Y'all be setting up my house with a flag.
Okay. We'll get a video.
Or we can get her one of, like, a fake gun and have her set on.
The barbecue.
Put it right here.
She'll be all set.
Y'all set me up so much.
So other than that, I don't really have much, just keeping out for each other, so.
Thank you, Victor. Foster, I do not have a report.
I'm just going to continue on with it with the counselors, Mayor Fortem Sigala. Sigala? Sigala. The weather is getting nicer, there's a lot of people getting out, I'm seeing some new trends this summer, a few more tourists in our area. Not just for events, but they come, they're coming back, the events are bringing them and they're coming back. So I'm seeing a little more, maybe not such a drive-through town. And I think that's a good thing for our local businesses. It's still a drive-through town, but a few are stopping, and that's, that's the beginning. So I see some great things coming for us here in Manavista, I see some improvements, more foot traffic. As Miss Margot said, the trees are beautiful, so it's much more pleasant to walk around downtown. So that's all good? Is that all good? Do I have something else? Okay, I didn't know.
I was done at Sigala roots.
You know, boss knows my accent by now, but not mine anymore, so I will get it.
So I will commend the chief on that graduation, that was awesome and had a lot of compliments. The Trinidad State came up and told me, I believe it was the president, came and told me thank you, and I said, I had nothing to do with it, I just showed up to get called out during the graduation, but that was great. But it was awesome to see all the people there and it was really awesome that the graduation was here. Them cadets, thank them, all of them, for what they do, will do for this community. This morning, I called the chief in regards to, had a strange six thirty, six forty-five, I believe it was. I called him and said, there's somebody walking down my alley and it's not right for that time of morning at my house. And the thing that really kind of got me was, there was, there was officers on, as far as I know, but what was really funny to me is, I see a strange person walking down the alley with a backpack and hoodie, like they're up to no good, and the community says, what were the police doing in our neighborhood? It's like, dude, how much do you pay attention? You've got to pay attention to the whole story, not just part of the story. So it kind of tickled me that, so it was Victor and Martha who said, people are walking around and it don't matter what time it is, so be vigilant to what's going on. So that, alls I got to say is money strong. We adjourn the meeting until?
June third.
Thank you.